Good evening and welcome, wow, March 1st, to the Wednesday, March 1st, public meeting of the Halton District School Board. I'd like to welcome everyone who's here in our audience. I know we have some special guests, and I'd like to welcome all those online that are watching us. I'd like to remind everyone, we are being video voice recorded, and as well as being streamed out onto the internet. I'd like to ask, if you haven't already, could you please silence anything that may make noise, like a phone, or a computer, or whatever else you have with you? And I would like to note, I believe we have regrets from the director, but other than that, I believe everyone else is here tonight. Oh, we do have, trustee Reynolds is not here at the moment, but she will be back very shortly. Okay. The Halton District School Board acknowledges and thanks the first peoples of this territory and other indigenous peoples for the use of this land in order for us to continue our work today. So, before we have approval of the agenda, there is two things we need to change. We need to, under presentations, we need to add the Inspire Awards. And on the minutes, it needs to say February the 15th, and not February the 1st on the top of the page. Other than that, I believe everything is good. So can I have a mover to approve the agenda as modified? Trustee Gray, seconded by trustee Gravence. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that passes unanimously, thank you. Do we have any declarations of possible conflict of interest tonight? Seeing none, we will now move on to our presentations. So, we're very lucky tonight, we have some people here that are going to be presented for some Inspire Awards. The Inspire Awards were created to honor people and groups who support the Halton District School Board students and their achievements. The Inspire Award recipients have been nominated by peers, students, parents, or community organizations. These individuals and/or groups are caring, innovative, and creative, and are exemplary in taking initiative to make a positive impact in the lives of our students. I'd like to say that if you're here with any of the recipients tonight, please feel free to come up and take pictures. We'd like to ask the recipients, after you've received your award, to stay up here, because we're going to be taking a group photo at the end. So, in this presentation tonight, we are going to be awarding three awards. We also have some recipients that are not here tonight that have chosen to be rewarded in their school communities. So, the, let me flip my page. Can I ask trustee Pappin to please come up to make the first presentation? Tonight, we are honoring Angela DiMario, who is a public health nurse at Tecumseh. She is very invested in the staff and students. She attends the staff meetings, and provides lunch and learns, and informs them of many of the opportunities available to them. She's willing to co-plan, co-teach, and co-organize. Three days a week, she is available to all the staff members, and she works with the Grade 6 students on a Tecumseh Health School certification, inspiring those students to make a difference. So congratulations, Angela, and thank you for being such an inspiration. Rachelle, just, sorry, trustee Pappin, stay up here, please. Change the order. Our next recipient is Nicole Helkett-Rischka, who is a staff member at Ryerson Public School. So, with Nicole's help, she has put a young boy on his path to learning with his unique learning challenges, abilities. She connects with her students and motivates them to grow, and how to work through with compassion, personal differences. Her mantra is, "In order for children to learn from you, you must love them." Thank you for being such an inspiration, congratulations, Nicole. I'd like to invite trustee Gravence up, please. Trustee Gravence is going to be awarding to two individuals tonight this Inspire Award. Christina Bailey and Alyssa Antonori, who are from Brant Hills. Christina is a classroom teacher, and Alyssa is a CYC. They organize activities that bring awareness of the power of kindness with the Great Kindness Challenge. They have a kindness board, a kindness photo booth, kindness announcements. Entry times have music playing with messages of kindness. All this has helped to create a very caring environment in Brant Hills. So thank you for being such an inspiration and making a difference for our students. So may I ask trustee Gravence and trustee Pappin to come up and hear the picture, as well as with associate director Boga and myself? Thank you and congratulations to all of our Inspire Award winners. What a great way to start off a board meeting. So we'll continue on with our agenda now. We have no delegations, so we will move on to the ratification of our minutes of the regular board meeting for February the 15th. Can I have a mover? Trustee Pappin, seconded by vice chair Graves. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none? All those in favor? Just a minute, it's not moving, there it is. And that passes unanimously, thank you. So, we now move on to approval of business transacted in private session. And I believe we do have one motion.
We do, we have one motion, and it's a personnel matter, and I so move.
So I'll have to ask you to add that, if you could. Can I have a seconder, trustee Carter? Sorry, I was waiting for the motion to come up. There it is, so, all those in favor? And that passes unanimously, thank you. All right, so moving on, we are now up to our order paper. Is there any comments or questions on our order paper tonight? Seeing none, then we will move along to our action items for tonight. And the first action item is the school boundaries, Martin Street Public School. Superintendent Newton and Trufan, sorry, report 17022 on page 13 of your board package. Welcome, and if you'd like to speak to it before I put it on the table.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. We are excited to present this report to you, as you have in your package. The work of 12 schools, their parent representatives, as well as the Burlington, or sorry, the Boundary Review Committee for Milton has worked diligently to hear responses and communicate back to the community. At this time, the recommendation that we are suggesting is the boundary recommendation of Scenario 12B, and we would ask you for your endorsement of that, and through the question period, thank you.
I'm going to put the motion on the floor, and then we'll have some questions and comments. So the motion is, be it resolved that the Halton District School Board adjusts the boundaries for the elementary schools in Milton, as outlined in Scenario 12B, and detailed in Report 17022, effective September 2017. Moved by trustee Daniele, seconded by vice chair Graves. Discussion, trustee Daniele.
Thank you very much, first of all, I'd like to express my thanks on this. A lot of hard work went into this, both from the two of you, all the staff from the Planning Department, trustee Graves, who co-chaired it, and most importantly, the parent representatives from all the schools. This was not a short process, and not an easy process, but I think we've come up with the best that we could. My question would be, the bottom of page 15, you talk about the neighborhood of Jamesno Parkway and Center Hedge Road, the triangle. And in the report, you talk about why the triangle cannot go to Bruce Trail, because of the old capacity. But you don't really show the rationale for moving those students from Sam Sherrett to Martin Street. And as I'm sure you're aware, we have received quite a bit of communication on that. So I just wondered if you would clarify for the public record, what was the reasoning behind them being moved from Sam Sherrett to Martin Street?
I'll answer that question, and thank you, through the chair, trustee Daniele. There were a couple of reasons that were discussed at our Boundary Review meeting, and there are two main reasons why. Sam Sherrett is at its absolute capacity for portables. They currently have 10 portables, they cannot put any more portables on site. Secondly, that, so that was a real major consideration for our Boundary Review. So Sam Sherrett is at absolute capacity, cannot add any more pupils, cannot add any more portables. Second reason was the English viability at Martin Street Public School. When we were looking at the boundary, the class sizes on the English, in the English track of Martin Street, the class sizes were very, very small. To the other trustees, and to the public, this committee looked at every grade, every class size, to make sure that there was a viable class for every grade. Kindergarten, all the way up, and it's opening up as a great school, that's a recommendation, all the way up to Grade 6. Absolute credit to the Boundary Review Committee. So those are the two main reasons why that that area is going to Martin Street. And important to note, too, that that area, Sam Sherrett, was always intended to be a holding site, holding school, as referenced in the Irma Colson Public School boundary.
I'm just wondering if that was communicated to those parents, because they don't seem to have understood that they were holding school. And just, I know that there are other areas of development. What made that particular area, being that it's on the fur west away from Sam Sherrett, and so it would be bus pass Bruce Trail, bus pass Sam Sherrett up to Martin Street? What made that the ideal area to move? Again, if you wouldn't mind, just for the public record.
Sam Sherrett, the main reason was, Sam Sherrett is at its capacity. Having supervised Milton for a couple of years, I saw Sam Sherrett grow significantly when that area got developed. And it really just has, does not have any more room to grow.
Misunderstood the question, actually. Why the triangle section in particular, and not another section? That was perhaps east of the school, closer to Martin Street, being moved?
We had to provide accommodation relief to Sam Sherrett. It was about not, it was not about the triangle, it was about providing relief to Sam Sherrett.
And to add to the quollery of that, one of the pieces, a natural flow would be, if you look at the map of Milton, would be to move those 150 families into Bruce Trail, and then move another 150 families out of Bruce Trail in order to accommodate those new families coming in. Again, part of the mandate of our Boundary Review process and the board is to provide the least disruption to the number of families. So while this triangle has 150 families that are impacted by moving them into Bruce Trail, and then moving another 150 out, you're actually causing 300 families to be moved. We feel that Martin Street is a good place to land for this triangle of development, and partly because, one, they move as a neighborhood, so it keeps the neighborhood together. Two, it also, Martin Street will offer both English and French program, French immersion programming. Therefore, families will stay together regardless of whether your sibling is in a French immersion program or English. Three, Martin Street is a brand-new facility, and so these children will have the opportunity to build, renew, and create a sense of belonging with 500 students together at the onset, when they launch in September. And four, the commuting distance right now on the busing from the triangle to Sam Sherrett will add another 1.6 kilometers from Sam Sherrett to Martin Street. So we did not feel that busing these students another 1.6 kilometers was a hardship in terms of their ride in the mornings and afternoons home.
Thank you for that clarification, I appreciate it.
Thank you, trustee Gray.
Yes, through the chair, thank you very much. I'd like to echo trustee Daniele's comments about the quality work and the hard work of all of the members of the Boundary Review Committee. And for those of you who are watching tonight, a shout-out to you. I'm hoping that you're watching, because it's part of the completion of a long story, a story that took place over the wintery months of January, February, as we met quite often, I think every other week, at Milton District High School. So, I have a question, though, that I think is important for the public record. My question tonight is, is there provision through, if 12B is to be adopted tonight, is there provision for grandfathering or optional attendance?
We talked about grandfathering at every one of our Boundary Review committees. We defined what grandfathering was, and because we are opening up, because the scenario on the table right now is opening up as a K to 6 school, for English, 2 to 6 for French immersion, we felt, as a committee, that grandfathering was not needed, because we were opening up as K to 6. If we were to open up K to 7, we probably would have considered grandfathering, because that would have had a number of moves for kids. Like, I know we talked about the Escarpment View area had four or five moves, but opening up a K to 6, 2 to 6, really, that group of, that cohort, there's not a lot of moves. And we didn't, we don't really see the value in adding grandfathering. However, optional attendance is always available to our families in Halton. So that's a possibility, but we are not, we did not put any grandfathering clauses in this scenario.
Thank you, vice chair Graves.
Thank you, and one of my questions was about optional attendance, because I have heard from families, particularly in the Escarpment View area, who are fairly close to Martin Street, and may in fact have students at Martin Street in the FI program, another student in the family in the English program, who may wish to attend Martin Street. Could, perhaps, could you just, for public benefit, walk us through how an optional attendance works? So some people have, they have the forms, they're submitting them. Could you let us know what the process for that would be?
Certainly, and through the chair to trustee Graves. Optional attendance is posted on our website, so the process is clearly outlined on our Halton Board website, people may refer to that. At this time in Milton, because you can see from the utilization of our schools, and it's a thriving, growing community, we generally have our schools what we consider closed to optional attendance. So that's sort of the starting mark, to try to maintain some balance in our schools, and also reserve spaces that might be available for people who move into Milton from now until September. And in some school areas, we have seen as many as 20 families come in each month. So it's those pieces that we can't predict in a crystal ball. Having said that, optional attendance is reviewed as an individual student and family's request, based on the student's learning needs, the strengths of the program for a student. So we would, at this point, if this should pass this evening, although optional attendance, if you read on the board's website, is now, the process has been completed, we would consider, for this particular Boundary Review in the Martin Street area, we would consider people who would like to submit optional attendance based on their individual child's needs, that we would review that at the superintendent's table, based on the recommendations from the panel tonight.
Thank you very much. Go back on the list.
Chief Gravence? Just actually a follow-up to that, I know, is there a deadline that you are aware of, that families should be putting in their form? They don't want to wait till June, right, to do that?
No, we, thank you, and through the chair to the trustee, we are looking at, for optional attendance for families, we would like to communicate with families as of tomorrow. We have crafted an email that we think we would like to send out, based on what you decide this evening as a board. So that families can be aware right up front on the process of making transition plans, what we have in terms of building a sense of belonging in a renewed school environment. So we would be looking for optional attendance. We'd be looking at the month of March, because we are into staffing and grade development and placements. So that's the pieces that we'd be looking at. March would be a fair piece on that, thank you.
Thank you, vice chair Graves.
Thank you, back to the triangle group. One of the main concerns that I've heard from that community is the concern that because they're a bit of an outlier, that are outside of the the walking distance to Bruce Trail, for the most part, that they're going to be an easy group to move, whenever space needs to be filled at schools. I know from the Boundary Review meetings that this was considered by the Boundary Review Committee, and that their intent, the Boundary Review Committee's intent was really that this was the, this was the one move that this was, this area was going to have. They haven't been moved yet, as part of our board movements. The, during the Irma Colson Boundary Review, that area didn't exist. It was like the Alton Boundary Triangle, the development wasn't there yet. So they haven't experienced a move from a Boundary Review, but the intent was that they not experience further Boundary Moves until perhaps such time as Bruce Trail has some space. Could you, are you able to speak to that? And just confirm that that was a discussion that was had at the, at the BRC?
The scenarios that were presented from the BRC that had the triangle moving to Sam Sherrett, you captured the discussion perfectly, trustee Graves.
To Martin Street.
Sorry, to Martin Street. That's exactly what the BRC communicated and what they wanted. There's no question, we would like this triangle to eventually attend Bruce Trail, which is the school that's closest to them. It just wasn't feasible, because of the accommodation pressure at Bruce Trail, which has portables, which just had a nine-room addition put on it. It just does not have the ability to accommodate these students. Martin Street does, so that alleviates Sam Sherrett's accommodation pressure. And we, it is, that's why we have a superintendent, two superintendents. We have that recollection, and it's in our minutes as well. That will not be lost, it will not be. That ultimately, this area, we would like, the board, the board would like this area to go to Bruce Trail. And when, when the school has the ability to accommodate them, it will be moved. So it's in about four or five years, hopefully.
Thank you. So the piece of that, while I recognize they were in the BRC minutes, I would like something noted in the minutes here, that that was the BRC's intent. So I'll just turn to manager Gortmaker, and we'll make a note of that, so that it's in our, it's in our board minutes, and that that piece isn't lost. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. I have utmost confidence in the BRC process, especially in Milton. But I do have a question. The, looking at the map, and I know I've been in Milton many times, but I'm sure three weeks ago, it doesn't look the same anymore. The English map, doesn't have as many streets on it as the French immersion map, excluding the triangle, which also seems heavily populated. You're saying 150 families, like, that's probably where all the numbers are coming from. But is it, the English boundary sufficient to be maintained? Again, I'm not familiar with that particular neighborhood. Is, I love the population around the school that's the English boundary is denser than usual, or those kinds of things? It's just, from looking at the map alone, and even looking at Google Maps, I just wanted to have some reassurance from some people closer to the ground.
Thank you very much, through the chair to the trustee Anne Harvey Hope. In looking at the scenario projections by the Planning Department, and they've looked at a 10-year window at Milton, which, for some of us, we have shook our head a little bit and thought, five years, if we can get five years in the accuracy of that. But we have a lot of confidence in Dom and his team. And if you look across in terms of parameters, over the next 10 years at Martin Street, that there is a viability for both French and English as it grows into Grade 8, that it's close to 89 to 90% by the year 2026. So there is a sustainability in that piece. In looking at Bruce Trail, at the same time, while that is stabilizing, Bruce Trail also is starting to come down. So by 2022, I think it would be, it would be fair to assess that we could look at moving students from Martin Street that live in that triangle to Bruce Trail. That's a very viable piece with keeping with that. So Dom's planning team very much looked at, how do we maintain some consistency for programming in both program areas at Martin Street, as well as Bruce Trail and the triangle?
Go ahead.
And is it right to say that the portable capacity is zero?
Yes.
Then I suggest that aiming for 90% is sufficient.
Thank you. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you. This is following up on vice chair Graves, just because I may dot the i and cross the t, and this is that we've been asking, I know it is our hope that eventually we will be moving the students back to Bruce Trail. I'm actually very encouraged by the dates that you're looking at, that it is well within the next decade, and I think that will be good news to a number of the families there. But just, I also wanted on record that, because we're going to be doing another Boundary Review next year, I wanted on record that we're not planning to look at this group again as a nice, easy cluster of kids already on a bus to move. Because I know that that's a big concern for the parents in that area, that they're moving away from the school that they love, going into the new school. And I think they will build a culture there, and they will very much enjoy it there. But they're concerned that because they're on a bus and they're easy to move, that every time we need to fulfill English numbers somewhere else, we're going to keep moving them. So if we can just give a reassurance, that that is not the plan, that the plan is to keep them at Martin Street until such a time as Bruce Trail opens up in space. I think that would be very much appreciated, if you could confirm that.
Through the chair, I have absolutely no problem with manager Gortmaker doing, putting that in the minutes.
Thank you, vice chair Graves.
Sorry, my last little piece on this, and it's just a statement. And I do agree that our Boundary Review Committee was fantastic, and thank you to both of you who did a wonderful job, and our other trustees on the committee. There's, there's one little, little piece that I've had in the There's one little piece that I've had in the back of my mind throughout the Boundary Review, and that's the class sizes at some of our smaller schools that also have FI. And I know it's not possible to solve all problems with one fell sweep of a Boundary Review. But I just wanted to note that I think in future Boundary Reviews, this one I was okay with because we don't know what's going to happen out of the program viability piece and how that change is going to affect it. But in future Boundary Reviews, in two or three years, once that gets up and running, I think it'd be important to really give critical attention to that piece as we go forward so that we don't have any of the long-term problems that can crop up in that. So just wanted to have that on record. Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers to this topic. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you to everyone who was involved in the committee for all the hard work. I know a lot of effort is put into trying to create all the different scenarios and the community providing their input, so thank you. So our next topic is the Ontario Financing Authority debenture issue. Superintendent Verhman, report 17020 on page 24 of your board package. Welcome Superintendent Verhman.
Thank you through the chair. The last board meeting, information was shared with respect to our need to go and debenture our last capital project. And at this point, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
So I'll put the motion on the floor first. Be resolved that the Halton District School Board approved debenture bylaw 17020 as attached report 17020. Moved by Trustee Gray, seconded by Trustee Pappin. So is there any discussion or questions for Superintendent Verhman on this tonight? Seeing none? All those in favor? Trustee Collard. Sorry. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you for your report. So our next item is the delegation bylaw. Trustee Collard, report 17029 revised on page 29 of your board package. Did you want to speak to this before I put it on the floor, Trustee Collard?
Yes, I would. I just wanted to direct trustee's attention to the change in part 12 of the bylaw where we've moved, removed the words "or derogatory" and put the word "derogatory" in front of the word "statement" to clarify that we wouldn't mind at all having compliments paid to people at the board. We only would prefer not to hear derogatory statements. And it's my very great pleasure to move this motion this evening. It's been several months of work, and I know that the public will appreciate the changes to the bylaw.
Thank you. So I'll put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved, the Halton District School Board's delegation bylaw as amended and appended to report 17029 be approved. Moved by Trustee Collard, seconded by Trustee Reynolds. Any other discussion? Trustee Reynolds.
Through the chair, I'm totally in support of this. I'm delighted that as trustees, we're able to get this going. I believe as citizens become more informed, more connected, more engaged, this change allows them to keep, let us keep pace with the immediate, lightning-fast communications people expect. And I'm certainly proud to be part of this. Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers to this topic. All those in favor? Just a minute, sorry. I hit the wrong button. Okay. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So our next item is our communications to the board. And the first up is our always looked forward to, student trustee reports. Trustee Metropulansky or Trustee Hajali? Floor is yours.
Thank you. So firstly, I just wanted to thank Trustee Pappin for coming with me to Ottawa. So I was in Ottawa for the Osta ECO Board Council's conference, and it was a really great conference. It's really interesting to get to go to Ottawa because there are a lot of boards that come out to Ottawa who don't always come out to the ones in Toronto because the other two conferences every year are in Toronto. So it was interesting to meet a lot of student trustees from northern boards, for example, who don't usually come out to Toronto. It's a great conference. We also wanted to report on our last Student Senate meeting, which was recent as well, last week or a couple of weeks ago. So there were a couple of things that we got from students that they wanted to hear us report to the board, so we'll just talk about those. The first is, we mentioned a couple of weeks ago that there were bus problems for some elementary schools and also some secondary students as well. And the board told us that if we could get like specific routes, schools, locations for those bus stops, that we could just bring those up. So we were able to get that information from students. And some of the problems that they're talking about, they do say are not just a one-off instance. They're pressing in the sense that they come late to class almost every single day or they come home after school very, very late, and they're continuous. So if we can get that information to anybody at the board, I think the students would really appreciate that. The second thing that we wanted to ask about was, for some elementary schools, there we know of one school in particular, but a couple of our senators had this problem as well. They wanted us to ask about, there are some grade eight students who have one teacher who teaches all of their subjects, or two teachers who teach all of their subjects, and they just found that it wasn't working for them and for their classes. And I think we would agree with that as well. And there was consensus among that within the Senate, where if you're in a younger grade, perhaps that works well. But when you get into grade eight, this is the year before you go off to high school, and it's challenging to have a teacher who has to teach a wide range of subjects ranging from mathematics to gym to English, which all like require some form of specialization, particularly when you're about to go off to high school. So we were wondering if that's okay, if there's anything that can be done for that. And once again, we do have a specific school for that. The third thing that was interesting to us, and this has been a recurring theme in our Student Senate discussion, is we always have them discuss what are issues going on in their schools, just so that we can provide them with any ideas that we have for how they can address them, given that a lot of the issues that they have in their schools are not board-level issues, but are just issues that they can address as students. And perhaps if they hear from other senators how they were addressed, that can give them ideas. But one problem that seems to be reoccurring or brought up constantly in our elementary senate is homophobia or racism in their schools. And the senators say that this is a consistent problem that they see, and they don't feel that their schools have been adequately addressing those problems. We've told them that as student leaders, they can address them, but if there's anything the board can do or provide their schools with more resources to address that, they would really appreciate it because as student leaders, we've been really impressed to see that they've picked up on these issues.
Other than that, we also did discuss the PAR process as well with our Student Senate. And in our earlier meeting in January, we had Associate Director Vogue come in and kind of do a presentation to give them any background knowledge or answer any questions they had about the whole process. And Director, Associate Director Vogue, I was, actually created a survey, a PAR survey, where the students could access a Google form and kind of put in any questions they had, any suggestions or any ideas they had. So we've been pushing for the students to go ahead and voice their concerns through that. There hasn't been much participation, so we're kind of pushing along that kind of route for now in order to hear their voice through there. But if there are any thoughts or ideas the board has or any specific things we want us to kind of get across from the students, we're open to ideas or suggestions about that. Other than that, the date for our Halton Youth Leadership Symposium should be confirmed soon for the May the 19th. So we're, during our meetings, we're going ahead and brainstorming for that as well. And our next Student Senate meeting is actually March 28th, as the March 10th one was canceled as there was a conflict with the CAC meeting in this boardroom as well.
Thank you very much for your report. So the questions that you had raised, did you forward them to like the Associate Director or to, I don't know who the superintendent would have been with you that evening, or was it?
We had not. We were hoping that we could come to the board meeting and kind of bring them up, and then after that, send it to whoever we're known as responsible for.
Well, I'm going to ask Associate Director Vogue to speak.
Yeah, and I just want to thank our student trustees. It's really great to hear that you're talking about real issues in schools, and we need that student voice. So I heard three different things plus the PAR, and so I'd be happy to collect that information for you. The one around school bus delays, certainly we can work with our transportation. There is ongoing work, so if there's specifics there, that helps us to identify, you know, why is that particular route a challenge and those kinds of things. And around the grade eight staffing piece, we can certainly talk to our elementary program folks and HR about that. And then the homophobia, racism, we can certainly pass that feedback back to our Equity Department because that has been a big focus for us. But is it getting to the classroom so that the kids see that there's things happening? So that's really good feedback. And for the PAR, I don't know what to suggest there. We'd love to hear the student voice on that. It's a pretty big, complex issue, obviously, that we're in the middle of. So any feedback that you receive, even if it's not a huge, overwhelming response, I'd be happy to collect that back and we'll share that with the PAR committee. So thank you.
Thank you. And there's a couple other comments or questions for you. Trustee Oliver.
Through you, Chair. Thank you, student trustees, for your wonderful report. I'm thrilled to hear that you're actually gathering feedback from the students, the student senators, and bringing the issues back to us for the trustees and senior staff to consider. You're doing a great job, and thank you for that.
Thank you. Trustee Danielle Lee.
Thank you. I would echo what Trustee Oliver just said in terms of the job that you're doing. It's always very hard because the year that we have you goes by so quickly. Because I know you're looking at elections next month already, and it just seems like yesterday you were elected. But I'm thrilled to see all the issues that you're bringing forward. I think that that student voice is very much needed, and you're doing a great job with that. I am wondering, I know that you have guest speakers quite often at Student Senate. Have you thought of bringing in Mary Jane Farish from the Equity Department to speak to those last issues around homophobia and racism? And let the students work directly with our Equity Department.
Yeah, that would be great. We would love to do that if we could get in touch with her. I know that also for our, like the Leadership Symposium that we're planning, they definitely want to have something on equity. And when I was at one of our Osta ECO conferences, they had like a really good equity speaker there as well, like he was super, super good. So we're thinking of having him do a really long workshop for that.
I would also suggest that perhaps you connect with Superintendent Etoff. I'm pretty sure that Superintendent Etoff can make the connections for you that you need.
Was listening. Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions for our student trustees tonight? Seeing none, well, thank you very much for your report. And it sounds like there's a lot of great things going and obviously keeping busy, and that you did a lot of good learning and networking up in Ottawa and a lot of hopefully good networking and learning out on your trip. Okay, so thank you very much. So our next item is information items. Do we have any notices of motion tonight? Seeing none, then we'll move to our action items for March 22nd. Look at that, there aren't any. Okay, so then we'll go on to our information items for tonight. The first one is the Early Development Instrument, the EDI. Superintendent Blackwell, report 17033 on page 33 of your board package. Welcome Superintendent Blackwell. And do you have someone else with you?
I do. I have Frank Nazabdal, who is an IPL for the Research Department. And Frank is actually going to talk, and I'm just going to sit here and flip the slides for him.
And the slides were just emailed around to trustees, I believe.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm happy to be here to share some information with you about the Early Development Instrument. I'm going to take you through a series of slides, just a short number, just giving you an overview of what it is, give you a sense of some of the key results and a sense of how we might use it and what we think is valuable for us as an organization. So the Early Development Instrument really arose out of a study that was, that some of you may be familiar with, the earlier study. And there was a call in that study for some further information at the population level about early childhood experiences, readiness to learn, and things that generally precede school but are very relevant to school. And so, beginning in around 1999, McMaster University started working on an instrument that was a teacher-completed checklist. And this checklist became the EDI and started implementation in Halton in 2003. There have been five cycles in Halton, but only four in the province. It's a local instrument, and coming out of McMaster University, it's traveled far and wide and is now being used far more broadly as a population measure. One thing that it isn't is it has some validity at the individual level, but it generally is only really reported at the population level. So it tells us good information about our communities, about differences and variations between neighborhoods and across regions in the country if you look at that level of data. It's used in every province and territory with the exception of Nunavut. Currently, it's been adapted for use in Australia, and it's gaining some wide use there. The instrument has a little bit of traction in the United States, but there are some competing instruments that are out there. But from a Canadian perspective, this is a very, very important population-level instrument that we can use to inform some of our thinking about what's changing in our communities and what our vulnerabilities are for our young people. So just going to give you a sense of, there are five main domains in the instrument, and these five areas really deal with very, items that really are developmentally important. And you'll see from some of the information that I show you that we see some variation between boys and girls. They have connections to development. I think some of the key ideas that we want to keep in mind is, there are a number of things that covary with this information, including community demographics and factors that are, that we see in other information sources. Going forward, this year, we're excited to see some new census data coming forward that hopefully will triangulate and help inform this context. I just want to give you a sense of the items. So physical health and wellbeing really probes readiness to participate in school in terms of being late, fine and gross motor skills, things like gripping a pencil, being able to physically move your body. The question, I think, pertains to like navigating stairs or a step, jumping and things like that. Language and cognitive development, we're really talking about very, very early symbolic learning systems. So the ability to recognize number and letter and make sense of those things. So there's a memory component in that for a lot of children. We're talking about social competence, skills that really have to do with being, having social experiences that are functional and workable. So items to do with cooperation, both in work and tasks and play, self-confidence and sort of self-regulation, self-control. The notion of emotional maturity is something that comes up, the ability to take turns, to show care for others. And finally, the domain of communication skills and general knowledge, which really is a secondary component to the language and cognitive development piece pertaining to use of language, but really communication in play and ability to engage with others using. using oral language. So those are the main areas. So, teachers would be given, the training was done by our department in this board from the beginning. And so, I've been part of it for two cycles. And the instrument is quite specific about what it is children can be, have been observed doing. And in that sense, it's quite personal. I mean, these are experiences that the teachers have with students. So this isn't something that's externally created. It arises from the work that we already do. Oh, yes, it is, it's an instrument that's collected, the checklist is completed, the questionnaire is completed only in senior kindergarten. So we don't, we don't look at our junior kindergarten students in that regard. Most of, if you look at this slide here, there are a number of terms that are used. The key one that you will see in the literature and across reports usually deals with those in the highest risk category, which is the bottom 10% of students. And those are the students that are considered most vulnerable. If you're below the 25th percentile, you're considered to be at risk. So the 10th to the 25th percentile. And if you look across, you'll see there's some other language there that differentiates those who we might think of being on track and those who are not on track. So the category of not being on track are those who are vulnerable or, and at risk. And then we think also about these things as a kind of developmental component as well. So this slide shows you four cycles of implementation and the results. There's a fifth one that would precede this in Halton only, and that one was at 24%. So you see, we didn't, we had a fairly flat set of vulnerabilities here. And just to be clear on what that's showing, so this is talking about students who are vulnerable in at least one domain. So not in any domain in particular, and that makes up about a quarter of our overall population. But it could be in any domain. And if you look across, you'll see from the last cycle, from Cycle 3 to Cycle 4, there's been an uptick in vulnerability, both in the province and in Halton regionally and in the board specifically. We've considered and had begun to have many conversations with our regional partners about why this might be and what's going on here. I would say to you that this is a fairly atypical result based on our other data sources. So, we typically would not expect us in this region to pop above the provincial in any way on measures that have negative implications. But we seem to have done that here. And so, we are interested to find out what's changing in our communities. And I think part of those conversations are going to be informed by the census data as it gets released to us. We're very much looking forward to that. We haven't had a really, really solid source of census data since 2006. And it's really been something that we see is really informing this conversation or questions about what's going on here. So I mentioned there was the uptick. This slide just shows you the five domains and the variation between the provincial and the Halton or HDSP results. You'll see that in three domains, we still see a little more positivity over the province. But in two domains, we see that we are lagging now and those two really are in the physical health and wellbeing domain and then the emotional maturity domain. So we've seen that that's the area that caused that uptick to actually increase more than in the province. This slide has been brought in really to show, to emphasize the developmental nature of this type of a measure. So there's the difference between boys and girls vulnerabilities made very, very clear here, I think. And so, we know that it's not the case that those gaps, those gaps do get closed by the end of schooling for a majority of our students. However, we, I think, have really good reason here to pay close attention to the kinds of ways in which students arrive with different skills, with different needs, and being in developmentally different places. And so, this is a piece of information that helps us think about that in that way. This slide really, it was just intended to emphasize the way that this information can work with existing sources of data, how it's tied into the work that we already do. We have a very strong sense that wellbeing of our students is an important area of focus, not just at the school level, but in terms of our planning and strategic plan. And I think that having good information at the demographic and population level can help inform how we attend to the needs and the variations in our community. I think also, when we think about this data as a population measure, we have a sense that the questions that are arising about what's changing in the community are going to be answered really through more questioning and more reception of data as we get the census information. And so, I'm feeling pretty positive about coming to that, but I don't have that information for you today. In terms of our work in the department and our connections in the organization to our community partners, they're very strong. And I think that this, what I wanted to communicate to you is the EDI data has been used in the Halton Report Card since 2003. Most of you in the room would have been, will have been familiarized with that along the way. We have not just data sharing agreements with our regional partners, but we conduct applied research in partnership with them to try to attend to both community level needs and school level needs. So this is another way that we get it in. And in terms of the report card, we like to always think about how are we mobilizing the data? How are we taking it out to the communities and making the best use of it? Both in terms of pursuing the activities that we need to attend to the disparities that we see and in terms of how we can mobilize the information to action. Yes?
Just to clarify, when Frank is referring to the Halton Report Card, he's not talking about the report cards for our students? He's referring to the Halton Region Report Card?
This slide, and you'll see it in the report, there's a better copy of the graphic that shows where some of the greater needs are. I think that what I would say about this is, some of what we see here is already known to us from a historical perspective. I mean, we know that there were some greater needs shown on the EDI in Halton Hills, Acton area, we had some pockets, Aldershot, and so on. And so, historically, some of those areas that showed greater vulnerability and higher need already have received access through our Kids Network hubs, through the placement of early year centers, through some programming pieces, and so on. This is an indication to us, however, that there are still needs and differences across our region and across neighborhoods. And just to be clear, these are the 28 Halton neighborhoods that we would think about via our partners in our Kids Network. And just finally, if this slide is just leading us to some of the ideas that are important to think about in terms of how we can respond to this data and information. We like to, I think, always think about it in terms of sort of two big pieces that arise largely out of the school effectiveness framework, and that is the idea of paying attention to trends over time. So what's happening, what's changing over time? And what are the differences between groups? So what's happening between our, between different populations, whether across regional areas or between, say, categories of populations, boys and girls, ELL students and so on. And I think that the main takeaway for us as we look and recognize that there are, there remain these important differences, is that these are indicators of whether or not things are getting more equitable over time. This is, the test of, the test of equity in many respects from an information data perspective is, are there fewer or is there a reduction in the differences in outcomes between groups on the measures? And so, I think we're left here with some questions still in terms of why we're seeing this uptick, both at the provincial level and regionally. And I look forward to investigating and exploring those a little bit further. And I'm happy to receive some questions.
Well, thank you very much Frank for all that wonderful information. I mean, there's a lot of things to reflect on and to absorb, but at a quick glance, I'm looking at the map and I know that some of our neediest schools may not necessarily align with some of the low, most vulnerable. So it's very interesting, some of the, and as a school board, what can we do to make sure that our parents, even before they get to us, understand what they need to do? So there's a lot of things, but you have a list of comments and questions from trustees. Trustee Collard.
Thank you. I'm really impressed with this report. I think it has a lot of very valuable information. And I like that you've drawn the conclusion of what we can do with the data. The one thing that I would like to see, and I don't know if it's possible, but to be able to track students, we're getting them in their senior kindergarten year and we don't know if by grade three, they're no longer vulnerable. We don't know what's happening to them as they progress through the school system. And I know that we have other measures, but it would, I think there would be a great deal of value in being able to measure these same measures periodically as kids go through school. And I'm particularly troubled by some of these high numbers, especially in physical health and wellbeing and, you know, 17.7%, very, very high. And I know that it's also high provincially, but some of these numbers trouble me greatly because we think of ourselves as being an affluent society in Halton. And these numbers tell us the truth. And that's not as affluent as we thought we were.
Yeah. So I appreciate the question and I think it provides an opportunity to provide a little bit of clarification and maybe just attend to some of the very important correlates to vulnerability as an idea. So it's pretty clear that the evidence shows that vulnerability is predictive of school success in a broad way, but also very specifically in the area of literacy and numeracy. And so, I think when we start thinking about how we can track kids very specifically in terms of those outcomes, we need to, we do need to move away from a population measure and get to something more specific. And so, when we start looking at our other data sources and we think about EQAO and we look at cohort tracking in EQAO and we look at other forms of data about student achievement and wellbeing, whether it's our Tell Them For Me student survey and so on. So we are able to see change over time that's quite positive. I think with this particular one, it does have the limitation of being a population measure. And so while it gives us a really good sense of what's happening at the neighborhood and community level, it's unfortunately not very effective at tracking kids.
If I could add to that through the chair to Trustee Collard, we do have many ways that we do track and follow students. We have what's called a school profile where we're able to drill down right into areas of student performance, to know the students that may or may not be at risk. Could be the PM benchmark data in terms of reading, it could be report card learning skills. It's sometimes dependent on what the school's focus is. But we do drill down and we do compare over time. And I'd wonder if Mr. Potter-Barrick, Superintendent Potter-Barrick would comment because he does have some news with respect to your concerns around the physical activity.
Thank you. I mean, I can also respond. I think the best way, in terms of interventions around this, is actually before they come to us. In many cases, kids are arriving at our doorstep with these vulnerabilities. So this is why we, EDI is a real collaborative with the region of Halton. And some are problem solving. The ministry gives us $50,000 in funding this year to do EDI mobilization. In other words, take these results and do something with it. And so that's something, in this case, we sit down, we look at schools, we sit down with their data and their childcare partners and look at the results, draw some implications and do some action planning around it. Because they vary, very much vary, school to school. Teacher fidelity is always a bit of an issue with EDI. A lot of it is the teacher's perception. And we try, through teacher training of the tool, to get some real standardization. But you'll notice, if you look school to school, that there can be real nuances in that. But I think the results, Halton wide, are really useful. And they do, they do, there are some troubling patterns in this and we want to look, we want to look at that. We do a lot around the physical health and wellbeing. We're equally troubled by that. Why, we put the playgrounds in, we're doing a ton of professional development around getting kids outdoor every day, playing outside, being active, gross motor activities. There's real value in that. And it actually will help them cognitively as well, getting out. So we're, it can be a bit of a persuading act too to parents. If you look, our lowest domains are the ones where we probably put the most time, right? The cognitive and the communication. And I would argue, historically, that's probably where our teachers see is the most teaching pieces. But when you look at the emotional maturity, social competence and the physical health, those are so important in the early years. And I'm not sure our parents value those equally in all cases and know just the value of getting your kids out. And so, we work with the region a lot around this. How do you get the messages out at birth? You know, birth, preschool, toddler, at those ages? Because this is when, this is a developmental measure and those are the developmental years. So we try to back this down and work with our childcare partners as well because they're equally implementing this. So it's something we all own and we all work towards planning around.
Thank you. Trustee Daniele.
I'm dating myself here because I remember in my first term, everything was about developmental assets. And there was a lot being done with developmental assets. And I am wondering, is EDI the evolution of developmental assets? Or do developmental assets play a part at all in the work that you're doing now?
Absolutely. So I would consider them to be, to have some connections to one another in terms of the identification of need. So, lagging assets can be seen as being more likely tied to vulnerabilities and risks and so on. What I would, the way I would differentiate it is I would say that developmental assets can be both the way in which one identifies what things might be lagging, whether it's social relationships or having an advocate. And also the sort of the approach or the strategy in terms of attending to the building of them. So I think that when we can, you will probably find, if you looked at some instruments that we, so we don't have developmental assets measurement instruments at such a young age. This would be the closest approximator, kind of a precursor. This would be the closest approximator, kind of a precursor. And as we would historically, when we moved to the Halton Youth Survey by grade seven, we started tracking 20 particular assets more specifically and when they look, then start to think about how they changed over time. But I think all of the asset building ideas are very relevant and important to this. So it's, it's really taking advantage of, you know, what are the things that students perhaps, children arrive at school without? And what are some of the things that we can provide as we, as we try to attend to those things? So developing personal relationships, having, making sure that every child has access to a caring adult and so on. And so I think that it's, it's part of the same thing, just perhaps on a, in a slightly different developmental location.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much through the chair, through the presentation today. I, I had several questions that came up and obviously there's just so much in this report to digest and what have you. Earlier today, I was in touch with Superintendent Blackwell, informing her that I had an interest in probing how the region of Halton Hills with its, the highest percentage of students vulnerable in one or more domain, what additional supports might be offered. But I think I was hearing some of the answers to that and, and I could maybe follow that up later, but my question right now would be, your comment that this is an atypical result of 30.5 in our cycle four in Halton, it's the largest jump from 24.2 to 30.5 despite the fact that during that era, all of our children have pretty much landed in JK. And so it, it's a real off to me to try and comprehend how, when we've got children in our school system that we are having access at, to at an earlier age, how we might be able to help them along and yet we're going the other way. So my question is, how do these results inform the work of our JK program?
I'll be happy to take that one through the chair to trustee Gray. We look at this, if you look at the new document that's come out, the new kindergarten, so there's a revised curriculum out this year and it, it centers around four frames. And those four frames, they're really zeroing in on the emotional maturity and, and social competence angle as well as some of the more traditional academic angles, but they value them all very, very equally on paper. The newness in our system, and I would still say new, is in how do you teach to support the development of self-regulation of young kids? And how do you, so how do we get at that? Do we, do we expect that or are we supporting that? And so it's really giving our teams permission to get to know your kids, form a nurturing relationship with the kids, go deeper with them rather than, you know, trying to get them to read the, the second day in class. It's about slowing down, going deep, embedding these skills because we can see the importance of them, knowing that it will get them ready to, to perform later. And so that's, that's still very much anchors the program. It's about us continually going deeper with the staff, the teachers and our early childhood educators to really talk, you know, further investigate how, how we do that. It's a new piece for, for, for many of us, you know? How do you build self-regulation in kids? You know, how do you, how do you improve their frustration tolerance? How do you, and, and the full day program, you know, it, it tests that. They're with us longer than ever and, and this is, this is a global trend too, not just Canada-wide. Vulnerabilities are rising everywhere. If, if we had the answer, I, I'd be doing keynotes all over, all over the world, but it, it, it is a, we are seeing increased challenges in young children everywhere. And so we, we think the Ontario curriculum is, is the right fit and it's just about going deeper and continually giving them the permission to, to go deeper in those non-traditional academic areas and also working with, at a regional level before kids come to school again. EDI is a community assessment, it's not a school assessment. And, and we have to, through our calling, that's why we work with calling all three-year-olds to get messages out. There's a lot of screen time in Halton and that's not an economic. If you look at those measures, kids, young kids in Halton watch, are staring at screens a lot more than kids the rest of Canada. Why is that? Do they know that, how damaging that is for children under three and how, how that doesn't increase their physical health, their social competence, their emotion? You know, like what is that not accomplishing? So I'm not going to sermonize here too much longer, but we look at, we look at all of those things in our, in our development and everything we do in our PD is, is really aligned to, to go deeper in this.
Thank you. Trustee Grabens.
Thank you through you chair. Yeah, these numbers are troubling. I was wondering, what we have, the quick question is when in the SK year is this taken? Is it towards the end of the year, like May, June? That this, that the survey is?
Right around, starting in February, the trainings start February, March.
Okay. So at that point, we presumably had the children for, you know, a year and a half. And I find the, the boys and girls split quite troubling. And I'm, you know, I'm wondering two things. One is, is that we don't have the cycles listed in here, like the past cycles? Is that gap getting bigger? Is it getting smaller? Like what's the trend there? And the other question I, well, thought that I have is, are we doing right by the, the boys in our system? Because why are they particularly more vulnerable than the girls? I know you can't answer that specifically, but it's just out there.
So just to the, I want to be careful about speaking to historical trends because I haven't looked very far back, but they're not new trends. That's, they're, they're there. How much they're changing in relation to one another, I couldn't speak to, but I could provide the information to you. In terms of the attending to the, the needs of boys in, in this type of way, I mean, there, there are a few different lines of thought on it and I think reflecting on the, the developmental sort of trajectories of boys and girls perhaps provides a little bit of guidance. Some of the items on the questionnaire, the domains on the questionnaire, when we, when you look at sort of where the, the vulnerabilities are, are more significant, there, there are things that often are a little bit confounding as well. So like gross and fine motor skills in the physical domain, you see a gap in vulnerability there too, yet you, you have sort of a sense that I have two boys myself and, and they're sort of rambunctious and they play and they seem to have a lot of gross and fine motor practice in life, yet we, we see this. So there, there's are some, definitely some, some further questions to be explored there and I, I can't begin to say that I have, have the answers to.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you through you chair. Thank you so much for this report. It certainly provides us a lot of very valuable information for consideration and implementation as we look at our multi-year plan. I'm particularly struck by the difference, and actually this builds on trustee Gray's and Grabens's questions and comments. I'm particularly struck by the difference between boys and girls and how huge that, that those differences are on all five domains. I think we have a lot of opportunity to, to look at our multi-year plan and what we're planning to do. And I think early intervention certainly is, is key here. If we can address these issues and work with the kids through their vulnerabilities, that will certainly help with their student achievement and performance and success and general wellbeing. So we do have opportunities where, you know, with our family of schools, where schools can collaborate and share ideas around best practices at their school to address any of the, the five components of the EDI. And we do have our multi-year plan. Innovation is one of the things that's listed there and innovation is, is different and can be about many different things. And so perhaps, you know, that's one area where we can look at. We, it's a, it's a known fact that boys are different from girls. They perform differently, they act differently, learn differently. And the same is true for children born later in the year than, than earlier in the year. And that, the data proves this. So, you know, again, also looking at community partners, we have great partnership with Halton Region and Halton Region Public Health and Halton Parents. There's opportunities for incorporating some of this early information and intervention into the prenatal classes and all the classes that are done with the young parents and through early year centers. So, so there's a lot of opportunities and I'm hoping that we can have a plan of action. And I know Superintendent Padrae Barrick has addressed some of that already so that we, we use this data, we, we look at early interventions and we, we build the skills for these kids, help them build, build the skills and excel. Thank you.
Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you through the chair. I really appreciate this report and I was just wondering if there was in your plan to share this data with individual school communities? And I, and I'm speaking here about the parent communities. I think from a, a school council or the PIC group, a parent involvement committee would value this information and I'm going to share with you, this actually, I, I can recall being involved in, at an element, in the elementary school where somebody did a presentation on this data. The, I believe it was public health who shared some data with us and census data and it certainly informed how the activities of the school council. First of all, it was very jarring, the, the information because people don't always see the inequities. You don't see, you just go along and, and think that there's, we're all the same and until somebody points out to you that there are some deficits in, in, in our community that you can engage the community to assist. Parents can be a, the parent community can be a very important part of this, of helping solve this, this situation. Whether it's choosing guest speakers through their pro grants that certainly speak to early, you know, years education, whether it's school improvements like outdoor playgrounds, certainly also eliminate, eliminating barriers of engagement for families. And I think this would be a valuable piece to share with them if it could be, and I don't know, is it? Is that, is that your plan?
So I think that, I think that tapping into PIC is, is something that's, that's been done historically. And I think, thinking about the mobilization dollars that are available, I mean, these are important conversations to have with respect to all of the opportunities at the school level. I think sometimes, you know, it's the local selection on the best way to engage communities. I mean, schools are already actively doing things to engage the parent communities and how they do it in one location may vary from how they might want to do it in another. And so I, I really appreciate, I think the, the idea that it's, it's got broad-based value, but tapping into sort of those connections that are already in place. So we know at some of our schools, particularly in the north or even in the areas where the early year centers were placed and the hubs exist and so on, you know, there's already been lots of work over the years in terms of engaging parents in the community. So people have done things like set up parental mentoring opportunities, so to tap into those relationships so that people can share. So existing, so parents of children who have moved out of kindergarten could connect with newcomer parents, kindergarten parents and just to share information about, you know, what are the kinds of things that you can do as a parent to engage kids, you know, maybe in symbol or play with language or number and this kind of stuff. So I think absolutely, I mean, this is every way that you can, every resource you have to tap into those connections is, is, is very, very important and valuable. Superintendent Padrae Barrick pointed out, the challenge sometimes is, is they're arriving to us as parents quite late in the trajectory. And so it's really often, you know, to, to really, we need to kind of think about how can we get engaged with our community partners to make sure that we're targeting the right communities as early as possible and so on.
Yeah, just add, I mean, there's lots of writing and research around, I mean, it's heavily looked at now that these vulnerabilities start emerging at 18 months. So just to give you an idea of, that's when they start emerging. Just further to trustee Oliver's point, the Halton's Early Learning and Childcare Plan is very much aligned and aware of these. So they, they are addressing that regionally through that plan as well. So both are happening at the same time and they're, they're equally aware. Many schools do use this, but we don't drop any edicts that thou shalt, but the focus is we, we'll have every school out looking at their results and, and planning implications on that. And I, I would expect and we can certainly provoke them to, to include a parent follow-up piece.
Thank you. Trustee Patten.
Thank you through the chair. I think my question has been answered, but I just wanted to thank you for this report. It's very fulsome and I, I hope that the information that we are gaining can be used down the road. The one piece I would like to have you talk about a bit, if you can, is the mental health piece. I know we are discovering stress in kids at a much earlier age and I guess that would be covered by physical and mental health, sorry, physical health and wellbeing as well as emotional maturity.
So I think when we, once we move out of the idea of sort of vulnerability and being at risk, then we start, our monitoring strategies really move eventually in our student population to broader ideas of wellbeing and, and things like anxiety and sense of worry and so on. But I think as we go back to trustee Danielle's question about the connection to developmental assets, I think what, what we're really thinking about when we're talking about this is, you know, are we provisioning those assets that we know are beneficial or protective in, in terms of meeting the needs of our young people and, and building relationships with them? And I think that that's really been our focus is to, to attend to the wellbeing ideas in such a way that we can offer protective relationships and caring relationships that will strengthen the outcomes for our students who arrive with those kinds of vulnerabilities.
Can I just add in addition to that? We, we do run a kindergarten specific program called Kids Have Stress Too, delivered through Teresa Wilson, through our mental health lead, targeted rate for kindergarten kids. It's through the Canadian Mental Health Association. So it is for kind of preventative, positive mental health approaches for really little, little guys. And we're rolling that out to more and more schools each year.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers, I'd like to thank you for coming out today, Frank, and giving us this presentation. As many of the trustees have said, there's a lot of really good information here and while it's only one tool, it's a piece of the puzzle that will help us to hopefully provide some supports for those students and give us a better understanding of what's going on. So thank you very much again for coming out and for Superintendent Blackwell as well for doing a great flipping. So our next item is the Southwest Milton High School Superintendent Cullen, report 17032 on page 37 of your board package. Superintendent Cullen. Superintendent Cullen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This, as you know, is a step in the process when we go about building a new facility. This is the sketch plan phase wherein the design committee brings back to the board the concepts that we are contemplating and working towards in the design prior to going into the detail of the actual tender documents and construction caliber documents that we'll submit for approval to the town. So if trustees can follow along, I don't know whether we can have this on the large screen or not, but I should start off with who's on the committee. Associate Director Bogue, Superintendent Hunt Gibbons, Superintendent Newton. And we have representatives from the architect firm as well as the facilities department. They've been working on a number of meetings. There's a number of other staff that have had input into this through those other individuals. And there will be more opportunities when we get down to the details of looking at each of the rooms and how they will be equipped or set up from there. The issues that we've got at the moment that would potentially still change this design, we don't have defined boundaries yet for this site. So the planning department is still dealing with the town and the developer on precisely where this will be configured and fit into the parcel of land that's been designated. There's a stormwater management pond. So if you look at the one drawing there that indicates it's not a swamp, it's a stormwater management pond, which can look like a swamp during certain times of the year. But they're really intended to hold the water. So when you look at all the developments occurred, we've got all the hard, hard surfaces with roofs and parking lots and buildings. The water still has to go someplace when it rains and that's what those ponds are intended to do. You see those big lakes around all the new developments, it's the stormwater management pond. That actual location and size is still yet to be determined. That will have an impact on, on the building design. The other issues are town approval. There may be comments that come from the town. And we are adjacent to a park. So our hope would be that we will position this and orient it in such a way that it will eventually lead to a good arrangement and a sharing circumstance between us and the town. Now we've had those conversations already. So typically we would position our parking between the two properties such that they could use our parking. We would use theirs and that would be, you know, part of the arrangement as we go forward. We've also positioned on the site, both the library and the theater on the exterior of the building. And I'll get into that when we actually look at the actual detailed floor plans. And the reason for that, the primary reason for that was, we don't currently have an opportunity to partner with anybody on either of those two parts of the building, but it could happen in the future. The town's timing is different than ours at the moment. So if that were to occur, having them located on the exterior of the building would at least enable some potential expansion or alteration of some sort. So both of them have positioned in that location. On the screen at the moment, we have the site plan, so I'll briefly talk to that one. So the school that you see on the upper portion of the drawing off to the right there, that oval track is actually Jean Vagnier, the Catholic high school that already exists. So their building and track and field are there. That's the one that during the winter months has the dome over it. So if you've been through town and seen the big white sports dome, that's where that is positioned. If you look below that, you'll see in the yellow lighter area, and I do have a laser pointer which I hesitate to use because I'll blind Associate Director Bogue if I miss. So I won't use it unless I have to. But that lighter colored area is our proposed site. So that doesn't exist yet. That's the proposed, it's just simply on the drawing. And that green outline that you see was the architect's review of the views that we were going to try and take advantage of. This looks out over the education lands, the green belt that sits to the west of Milton. And then of course, would then have a direct line of sight of the escarpment. So that was really part of what we were trying to capture in the positioning of the building and some of the views that we would get from the actual building itself. The blue segment is the building. The track is pretty evident on the left side. And the parking lot sits on the, on the east side of the property right now. The road patterns at this point are fairly well-determined, but not finalized. So once again, that it will have an impact on our final design should the road shift a little bit. And I may as well comment to the right of our school, which is to the east, you'll see an elementary school on both ends of a neighborhood park. The one to the south is our Milton 10. So that's going to be sort of the proximity of our Milton Elementary School that's currently being designed as well. Any questions on the, the site configuration itself as they sit relationship to where it is in the town? This is Louis Saint Laurent at the top of that drawing and it's Bronte Street that we're looking at right there. Okay? If we can move to the next page of the report. This is a blown-up version, if you will, of the site plan. So you can see now we've kind of oriented it, oriented the other direction. You've now got, north would be to the right. The street that is in front of the school is Bronte. I'm going to point out in the bottom left corner is a roundabout. Now that creates some element of concern for us because roundabouts are particularly convenient towards moving vehicles. They're not ideal for students crossing. So we were having, we're going to be having a lengthy conversation with the town when we get into the approval process about how students will actually cross the roads. Roundabouts seem to be more car-friendly than kid-friendly. So that, that's going to be a potential issue for both the elementary and secondary populations. The, the white parcel that you see sort of taken out of our block is not owned by us. It's not part of the designated school site. We've heard several comments about what may or may not be developed on that site, but it is not part of the school site, which isn't ideal. But nonetheless, it, we wouldn't have access to that corner anyway. That wouldn't be a vehicular, it'd be too close to the intersection to have an on-street access. So our access points are moved back, in other words, north. We don't want to have them too close to the intersection. So both of the parking lots that you see in that L-shaped configuration are designed to be looped so that you can come up to the building and drop off and then loop out, whether it's parent cars or buses. Fairly lengthy on purpose to create the long queuing areas for vehicles to have that drop-off capability. Just to quickly, I am going to use the laser pointer, so everybody duck in case you have to. This will be the main entrance coming in. I missed you, you're all right. This will be the main entrance to the building. The library is in this area, theater here, shops down this side. So this is actually the parking, you know, storage area for shops and cars. These are the garage door side. Office and science area sit here in a two-story configuration. This is the gym in the middle, which is a fairly common design. We like to put the gym in the middle, wrap the building around it. And across the back, we have two three-story towers of classroom pods. And we'll talk about those in a little bit more detail when we get into the floor plans. And the cafeteria is here, which gives us again, open to the access. This architect is the one that did Garth Webb. And if you've ever been in Garth Webb, they really worked hard to create the sort of flow from inside to outside. They're striving for that same kind of effect, hopefully in that area. We've allowed for the provision of potential future portables. The running track, sports field with the straightaway and jumping features in here. So as I indicated earlier, the stormwater management pond is going to be either up here, here, or here. We're still having great debates on that. And the park is our neighbor to this side right at the moment. Okay? If we can move on to the next. So this is, actually, we're going to skip this one because that's too small and there's a larger version right there. Thank you very much. So what we have again, main entrance into the building. Office area on the ground floor. Labs are above that. Library is in this corner. Theater this. Gym here with all the associated change room, storage areas. Shops and tech areas along this side of the building with access to the outside. And these are the two, I'll say towers as we're referring to that have a combined work or activity area surrounded by six classrooms in that configuration. On this floor, it's actually got some of the spec ed areas in here as well as two regular classrooms that would allow the expansion of these areas into here if that were to occur. But at the moment, we've set aside, you know, that, that cluster of areas for that purpose. And this, of course, is the cafeteria with the server located here. Any questions on ground floor? Trustee Harvey Hope.
There's a whole list of people who want to.
In that case, I'll stop for a moment. Go ahead.
Vice Chair Graves.
Could I just back you up to this? So one of the site plan ones with the green on it. Two questions about that one. The CN line is behind. So I guess that maybe the slide before that. Is it, do you know where there's going to be a crossing? Either a, a road crossing or pedestrian crossing over that? Is that?
Sorry.
Yes.
I'm not, I don't know yet because none of these road patterns at this point are finalized. So that's what part of the planning department is still working with the town on. The developers haven't concluded all of the details in those spaces yet, which is why we haven't actually been able to acquire the site. So that would be, we'll bring that up with Mr. Ranzella about the planning aspects as to what may be occurring there, but I'm not aware of anything happening specific to a crossing.
Great, thank you. And my, my follow-up is the, where the roundabout is going to be. Is that going to be more like a major through road through the neighborhood? Or is it, will it be like a Louis Saint Laurent? Or is it going to be a Britannia or is it going to be?
It doesn't appear to be as large as Louis Saint Laurent. So I, I don't think it's the multiple lane style that you may have seen in some of the configurations. It looks like it's a single lane version at this point.
Thank you. Trustee Edgar Benz.
Thank you, Chair Amos. I have, this is about the floor plan. Okay, so it looks like a beautiful school design, but I have a couple of thoughts. I noticed that the music room is beside the auto shop. And that might not be terrible with regards to instrumental music, but vocal music with the sounds of the auto shop could be incredibly disturbing. It's, I, I see that might be an issue. The other thing is if we're looking at, you know, the whole idea of steam and having arts tied into the technology side. Again, the shops are in the bottom part of the floor, of course, ground floor. And the arts is on the second floor, or is it third floor, second floor? On the opposite side of the building. So the tie-in doesn't, doesn't feel like there's a tie-in. And when you're getting into set design and that sort of thing with regards to where the theater is in the school, it also could be a problem. Just some comments.
I, I can speak to two elements of the, two of the items you've mentioned thus far. One, the music room we have talked about and the need to do a proper job of, of the sound attenuation between those two spaces, which we believe physically can be done. Will simply be a double wall configuration, so nothing transmits. They physically wouldn't be connected, but we have talked about that. So that is a, an item on our radar. And again, haven't detailed the design yet, so when we get to that point, we would focus on that. The location of the backend of the theater and the larger shops is done that way intentionally around the sets in particular. So the construction of and movement of their same level, so that, that works out particularly well. The art rooms, the actual art rooms have typically been positioned so that they get natural light north side. So one of the things that they have indicated from a drawing perspective and in those elements is actually the light that comes into an art room. So we typically have many more windows than we do in a conventional classroom at that location. So I might have to look to some of my program colleagues around the connection between the actual art room and the shops. But I think we've addressed the one related to, I'll say, the technical elements of theater and the construction of sets or the movement of sets, storage of sets, those kinds of things have a relationship here that we think would work based on ground floor and proximity.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
I'll try a few and then go back. On the music side, wondering whether or not the number of practice rooms has been looked at. One of the things that I know I've seen many times, sometimes more in an elementary setting, but also in the secondary, is places to wander off and play and go into small groups. And in the corner that they're in, there's nowhere to go. Maybe outside, but we do have winter. But I do want to commend the, the back classroom piece for those hanging out areas that are actually officially hanging out areas, places to sit between classrooms. So I really like those. But I'm wondering whether or not maybe the music corner needs something, even if it's a foot at the end of the hall, like a couple, a corner or something, like a dead space. I know there was a couple of schools we toured recently that had what I would consider a dead space, but they were full of people. So they obviously had good uses. In relation to that also is a green room and planning for it. I know one of our other high schools, when we were planning it, the video tech room, et cetera, could be easily turned into like a secondary dressing room or a green room or a backstage. There is an official backstage area, but it also may not be big enough for a production in the theater. So whether if the idea officially was that the music vocal room would turn that into that or not. They're close enough, but just to wondering if we actually intentionally think it through from a extracurricular kind of point of view.
Associate Director Bogue would like to respond first.
Thanks, Chair Amos. Just to jump in and then I'll send this back to Superintendent Cullen. Just so that trustees know, and Superintendent Hunt Gibbons may want to comment on some of these program-related things. There's been quite a process behind the scenes as well in terms of consultation with the program department around lots of these pieces. It's gone back and forth, back and forth. And there are sort of our subject area experts. So they've had an opportunity to sort of weigh in and, and voice some opinion around some of these design features, as well as our secondary principals have had a good look at this as well. So I just want trustees to know that this, this has been vetted with, with our expert, our program experts around some of those pieces. But we appreciate the, the feedback in case we have missed something. So I don't know, Superintendent Cullen, if you want to have a go at trustee and Harvey Hope's question or whether Superintendent Hunt Gibbons might want to.
Thank you. Through the chair to all of the trustees. The, the process and the committee behind the design of the school has been incredibly consultative. And to the point that it's, of course, always full of some really good intellectual arguments around what is the more pressing need? Because you can make connections between all sorts of different areas. And at the end of the day, you only have so many square feet and it has to fit in the plot of land that has been given to us. So in this case, it's designed as a three-story. So there have been a lot of different movements. The music room is positioned beside drama because of the co-curricular considerations. And if you look at the drama facility, you'll notice that it is actually orientated on one side such that nobody has to walk through that area in order to get backstage. Because originally it was drawn so that the, it was coming out the front. But then, of course, you have your access issues. Having music next door also allows in terms of the movement back and forth of instruments and when our bands are going to various places. The comments with regard to steam or sch steam are, are well-heard. But again, when we started looking at our view and what was there and being able to keep these areas together and putting them upstairs where the natural light and the beautiful view were, we chose that instead. And if Ms., if Superintendent Cullen would direct his laser pointer towards the part, I think that Superintendent Newton would agree with me, is the part that we're very much proud of in this design. It would be the special education at the center back of this building, which we believe is very innovative and unique to our new Milton site. And this deals with the fact that our CPP program is in the center and in the heart of this building. And we made some very conscious and cautious decisions to place it there so that it would be in the heart of this building and very much a part of the hub of everything that is going on. And in doing that, we had to make some other decisions around where classrooms would go. Because I say, it's three stories and a small piece of property and with a lot of competing pieces. But I'm, I'm very glad to hear that people have noticed those hangout spaces as trustee Harvey Hope has noted. Those are loadable spaces and those are spaces that we're hoping very much from a pod point of view will allow for that collaborative inquiry, project-based learning, cross-pollination between subjects and between students. So it is a very unique design indeed.
And if I can carry on through the chair to trustee Harvey Hope. The question about the number of music rooms, we've, as I think many have, or practice room, sorry. In, in reviewing the sites, typically what we've seen is they get used for a variety of functions. Secure storage, a temporary office of some sort. But invariably, there's at least one used as a practice room. So in this configuration, we've got a combination of practice rooms and storage rooms. And you may have seen on some of the tours, the wire mesh storage cabinets that can be used right in the classroom space and thereby not needing a dedicated storage room. Those will come down into the details as we start to work through the specific room layout as to whether or not a room with a door versus the. layout as to whether or not a room with a door versus the cabinets is the better option in this particular configuration. Most of the sites lately have gone for the wire mesh cabinets right in the room so that they can actually put them in without having to go into a specific room. So that may then reclaim one of the spaces as an additional practice room.
Thank you. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. One, I'm concerned, I've recently had the opportunity to tour our latest build, Frank Hayden, and I'd heard that the classrooms were very small, and when I would see them, I noticed that the classroom seemed smaller than our others. So I'm kind of curious, is this going to be built on the same kind of footprint with the smaller classrooms? That's my first question. My second question is the CPP, is that meant to be a new CPP program? Because I know we have grown the space at Craig Kilbarger for the CPP program there, and so will this CPP program take into account future generations coming, the growth of the program in such a way that Craig Kilbarger didn't? And I wondered how many elevators there are in this building in terms of if there's a fire getting differently able students out of the building.
Through the chair to trustee Daniele, I'm going to go backwards in order because I'll remember them that way, I suspect. The elevator question, oddly enough, you can't use an elevator during a fire. So the volume or number of them becomes irrelevant in that particular circumstance. However, the elevator in the building right now is proposed to be here, which puts it right across the hall from the proposed CPP area and still keeps it close enough to what we'd call the public spaces, i.e. the cafeteria, this sort of street area. And this is the three-story part of the building, so this is two stories. You might be tempted to take the stairs there, but three stories you might not. So keeping it in that general area seemed to be the right place to locate the elevator. As far as this being an additional or an expansion or replacement for the Kilbarger program, I would make my comments that based on what we've seen at Kilbarger, I don't believe we would up and move the entire program and expect it to be here. I have a pretty strong suspicion that we're going to have a program at each location, and I'll look to Superintendent Zahnfeld to verify that. But based on the evolution of the program at Kilbarger, I would say that there'll be one at each location, and this would look to alleviate some of the pressures there. And this one has some additional features that, if you've seen the storage for the equipment, we've now started to refer to one of the rooms actually as the garage because of the size of the equipment and volume of it for the students involved. This has taken some of that into account as well for the extra storage spaces. So I think, I don't know whether Superintendent Zahnfeld needs to comment or not, but I think you can count on this being an additional space, given the population needs. Classroom sizes, one of the things we've run into, ministry has a range, and there's one of the pages in the report, and we haven't actually spoken to that yet, but there's a sort of a script that the ministry provides for how they would suggest you build the building. We're not bound to that. They go through the number of rooms, size of rooms, come up with a configuration. So we look at that, we look at what our needs are here. Our classroom sizes are right around, they're between 750 and 800 square feet. Most of the Hayden ones are at the 750s or at the lower end of that. These range to some degree, but they're still within that 750 to 800-ish for a standard classroom space. They're not that much larger.
Thank you. Trustee Paff.
Thank you. Through the chair to Superintendent Cullen, I have two questions. The first one has to do with when street names change when they cross municipalities. So I'm just curious, is Bronte Road and Bronte Street the same, same thing?
I'll let our member from, the honor of members from Milton comment at, no, they're not. They're two different, and they run parallel to one another about sort of five major streets apart. So there is a Bronte Street and a Bronte Road, and neither of them are Highway 25, which is what it used to be, so.
Okay, okay, I was just trying to get my bearings.
Yeah, oh, if you're trying to get your bearings, the simplest way I suspect to describe this one, this would be right now on the western edge of development. If you were in Milton right now, this would be about as southwest as you would see any development going on. There's a little bit going on at Britannia, but Louis Saint Laurent is the one that our Kilbarger sits on, but Kilbarger is to the far east of Milton. This is the far west, and it's actually south of Louis Saint Laurent. So where Boine Public School is. Actually, if we can go back to the site plan, I'm not sure if Boine shows up on that plan, but I can tell you approximately where it is. So if you go back to the site version that shows the map, keep it right there. So that is probably the site under development for Boine Public School, if you're familiar with Boine, and then Louis Saint Laurent. And then this is undeveloped throughout all of this space right now. And this is underway, they're working on. But you wouldn't see anything that looks like a road or a street, it just looks like carved up parts of earth right now.
Okay. And it's not really a follow-up, but, sorry, I thought someone had something written. And it might be a little bit premature, but when we were touring Hayden last week, the principal went into an explanation of the allocation of transgender washrooms, the single stalls and the multi-stalls. Is this something that's in the plan now, or is that something that you decide once the building is completed?
Excellent question. It is a trend that we are enhancing at each site. So this one, if we can go back to one of the floor plans, I think any one of the floors at the moment, so we'll start with the first floor plan, keep going through about there. So there are a number of, and you probably can't see it in the scale that's here, but you see a number of staff workrooms, with a staff room here, a quiet room here. There are individual, and one of the team members insists on referring to these as powder rooms. We like to refer to them as the gender-neutral washroom. So they are positioned here, here, in conjunction with the washrooms that are along here. So we're putting in as many as we can in as many locations as we can throughout the building, recognizing that the individual washroom with a lockable door for privacy will become sort of the commonplace thing for us to move to. Considerably more in this school than any other design we've done.
Thank you. Trustee Hajali.
Hi, thank you. I just have one question, reference to the hangout spots that you mentioned. I also think it's a really great idea, especially because I find in high school, traditionally students go to libraries to kind of study, and usually that space is filled up pretty quickly. And so this is excellent kind of way to open up some more areas where students can go and collaborate and study as well. But my question is just, in terms of hallway space and where lockers would be, and that, I know as soon as the bell rings or students start kind of going in the mornings or after school, kind of to go and get things from the locker, there is a high volume of traffic. So if you do have these kind of hangout spots with tables in the hallway, I don't know, did you guys consider how much space that'll take up and whether that'll affect students coming and going, or if there are lockers in that area in general?
Through the chair, we've taken a pretty good look recently, it was actually done since these drawings, on exactly where the lockers would go. We're also talking about the types of lockers. One of the trade-offs around the whole locker conversation is, in many of these circumstances, we want to keep glass walls or views into the classrooms. Well, if you have views into the classroom, then you don't have a wall to put the lockers on. So initially, it was designed to have as much visual effect as we could get. And as we've started to go through, we're looking at the numbers and locations of lockers very specifically, and there is a separate drawing that actually has that on it right now. So we'll spend a lot more time detailing that, with the hope to keep the lockers, I would say, out of the public spaces, so that this street in particular will have an area that will be open to the library. This will be sort of a public congregating space. Certainly, the cafeteria will have that element to it, as well as the wider sections of hallways and places like, you know, these and the ends of corridors. So we're going to look at it from that configuration as we start to position the lockers as they go through. Thanks for the comment.
Thank you. Trustee Edgar Benz.
Thank you, Chair Amos. This is my last set of questions, I promise. So the, again, the theater, I just had a question about what kind of theater is it? I know I'm looking at chairs and stage, is it a kind that has a slant down and sort of a stage? Or is it more like the crappy cafeteria kind? Or what, when you perform on them, you certainly notice the difference. So I was just wondering.
I really like the non-judgmental question. It will be what we refer to as a studio theater. So it's not a sloped floor, it's flat floor. So I would say it would be very similar to M.M. Robinson, Hayden, the addition to Blake Lock, the addition to Milton District High School, T.O.T., very, you know, consistent throughout. We've gone flat floor, lots of acoustical treatment, lots of technical stuff around the catwalks to access lighting and sound of those things. This shows, I would say, a seating configuration, but they're not fixed seats, so we would keep it open for that. Now, it is, though, an elevated stage from within the room, but it's grade-level stage in, off the corridor. So from an accessibility standpoint, what we're trying to do is create so that you can access the stage without having to have a lift in the center front of the theater itself. And we're still looking at some of those things around the accessibility elements, but right at the moment, that would be the concept that you would, if you pictured Garth Webb, the cafetorium is dropped, the stage is level, giving everybody access to the stage. So that would be a variation. But this is not a cafetorium, this is a studio theater, and the cafeteria is separate and remote in the back.
Go ahead. Are there any, in Milton, are there any auditoriums that are more the traditional type?
I'm going to look to trustee Daniele or trustee Graves on, I believe there is a performance venue in one of the town sites.
In a town facility.
Yes, but not in our, not in our schools. And I'm trying to think of the E.C. Drury one. I think it's still flat floor. There is a, there is a theater or a space they refer to as the theater, but it is still a flat floor, non-fixed seating. But I believe the town does actually have a performance venue. Yeah.
Okay, I'm just saddened by the fact that we're moving away from that kind of traditional, because from a performer's perspective, it is a very different venue and, and doesn't give the authentic experience that you would get at a regular theater.
If I can comment further on that, one of the struggles that we've had, and I don't say just the board, I mean just in general, is, is it a theater or is it an instructional space? And officially, this is really a very elaborate instructional space as part of the drama program. That's sort of it in context. So we were quite pleased at the fact we've been able to make them this big and this elaborate, when it really is for that purpose. That's why we've kind of kept it multiple purpose as well. Having said that, if you look at the configuration, and again, where it is, one of the drawings that we've played with to date was, if this was ever a partnership opportunity, we would turn it and have the addition come towards the front of the building, towards the street, would actually project it at the existing footprint of the building, making it a larger space. But again, that would be, I would say, very much conditional on a partnership with, with somebody that wanted to see it turned into more of a performance venue than an instructional space.
Thank you, trustee Edgar Benz. Just so you know, it's not a recent thing, it's been going on for a long time. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. A couple more on my list. Wait Room for Gymnasium, I can't seem to find. And just to sneak a second one in, the Learning Commons, that fireplace configuration and the block, I can't tell if that's all within the, an open library or whatever, so that's two.
Okay, and I'll take the library one first. The library's in the bottom right corner, as you see it right now, with some collections and stacks located in the, I'll say, the extremities of the room, with the intent being a congregating space that is potentially open to the corridor. Again, this will be subject to conversations with the building department, fire department, but as open as we can make it so that it is a open forum, flowing kind of space, that also has a variety of different seating arrangements, as well as the infamous fireplace and whatever other amenities are there to make it an attractive space to go. So that's the intent for down in that space. And the reason that you haven't found the wait room is, I haven't presented the second and third floor of the building yet. So maybe it might be time to move up one floor. That's, yeah, the health class, so if I can jump up to the second.
Apparently, there's still one quick question.
Oh, sorry.
One quick question on this floor, and it has to do with those congregating spaces and electrical plugs, because as our students are more and more having cell phones on them, perhaps laptops, Chromebooks, they need a place to charge them throughout the day. Are there ample places?
There will be, again, that's part of what we have not yet detailed, but again, one of the comments that we heard when we did the review for the Close the Gap, one of the comments consistently was, many, many more devices are in buildings, therefore more charging stations needed, more flexibility around where those are, a variety of outlets that have both the USB charger as well as the 110 volt. So I would suspect when we get down to detailing those spaces to that regard, that will be part of how we attract students to areas, right? If you want them there, you can kind of entice them there by having those kind of amenities in those spaces. But yeah, that would definitely be a detail we'd get into. Second floor of the building is, has a unique feature for us. I'd like to say it's unique in the universe, but it's not. Anybody that's been to any of the new gyms around, including Jean Vanier, which is the very, very, you know, close to us, have created an indoor space large enough to actually run on. So it's actually a track that circles the perimeter of the triple gym. The intent in this particular configuration would be to have all of the weight equipment, exercise equipment and others along the outside of that. So this is the triple gym, which would be, if you picture this down on the ground floor, the running track level is at the level of the second floor corridor, and this widened space over to here would have all of the equipment along this side of the actual space with the, an instructional health room, storage room and whatnot scattered around the gym itself. It is something new for us, it does add a considerable amount of floor space and potentially cost to us, so we're a little concerned that this is a new feature that we're going to have to make sure we've created some room within the budget for. But it doesn't take us over the ministry guideline at this point. Like, if you look at the, and then we'll go back, sorry, at one point, we may go back to the page that shows the math and the numbers, we're pretty much right at the limit of the ministry number, and we'll talk about that in a moment. Second floor, let me carry on the tour. This part of the building is only two stories, so this is over top of the office. This is now all of the labs and some classrooms in here. So this gives us direct access to the roof space for all the vending that has to occur with all of the labs. They're here. This would be the upper portion of the cafeteria, so it'll be higher than a single floor, but it would be sort of roof in that area. And then this is now the second floor of the two, three-story classroom pod towers that have activity spaces in the middle, surrounded by six classrooms on each of these two configurations, with, again, staff rooms, washrooms in that area and also in the other area as well. So that's the second floor. Do we want to take questions on the second floor before we move to the top, or should we just do the top and then we can take them all?
Keep going, there's nobody there.
Then let's jump up to the top floor, because it's straightforward and simple. We've now exhausted all of the space down below, and we only have the three-story classroom pods that come up here with the spaces in between the washrooms. And as noted earlier, the art rooms are in this sort of top floor north corner, which gives them, I would say, sort of the ultimate access to natural light in almost any orientation that they wish. So again, part of the reason that was located there. Just briefly comment on these spaces, these are considered a suite. So one of the things that we will have to deal with will be the fire department. Normally, these would have to be fire-rated corridors, typically a classroom exits onto a corridor and has a fire-rated door to protect the corridor. These will be treated as a suite of rooms, which is why you see doorways in between them over here. So in other words, it's an entire space that's exiting out into the corridor as opposed to a number of individual rooms. And that, there will probably be changes to this as we get into the actual detailed designs around requirements, but at this point in time, it's a fairly confident design at this stage. So I'll take any questions related to now second and third floor.
And you have a couple now.
Okay.
It must be the roof that did it, it's that third floor that did it. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, through the chair. I just want to say, this looks like a fantastic design, and it'll be a beautiful school. And I'm very pleased to see a quiet prayer room accommodated within the building.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Thank you, through the chair. Just an observation, through the past week, when I was on tour with many of my colleague trustees through schools in the Burlington area, I couldn't help but notice that when we were on the upper floors, a lot of the lockers were bolted shut or were not in use. And the reason that was projected to us was that students generally like to have a locker on the first floor, at the most, the second, but forget about arriving at the school, going to the third floor, and then having a class on the first floor. Is there a need, or is there an ability to position most of the lockers over the first couple of floors and avoid lockers on the third floor?
That, sorry, through the chair, one of the things I just indicated, we are looking at is actually where all of the lockers will be. There's also a whole lengthy conversation about how many lockers are we going to try and put in the school? So if it's designed for 1,200 kids, do you put 1,200 lockers? If you've got potentially more portables coming, do you strive for 1,400 or 1,500? Or do you only have 800 and have the Or do you only have 800 and have the kids double up? So there's a lot yet to be worked out in the element or the area of lockers. And in this particular one, we've actually talked about different configuration sizes and shapes of lockers again. So interesting that you would say that the first floor is preferred. I haven't necessarily heard that comment because in a lot of cases, we've tried to locate the lockers where the kids spend most of their time. If they're going back and forth from class to class, they may want to get to their locker between classes. And in this, with a three-story tower of classrooms, they may find themselves going strictly to the third floor, third to second. They may never get back to the first floor. So we'll have to have a conversation about just exactly how that does or doesn't work out. But thanks for that. That'll lead us down that path.
Maybe that's a question for our two student trustees to ask at students. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Chair Amos just mentioned what I was going to ask, and unfortunately, student trustees did leave for good reasons. It's getting late. But wondered whether or not, I appreciate the fact that the program staff have been intimately involved in planning this, but students and staff don't always have the same viewpoint. So perhaps we could have some student voice on this. Again, as Aid mentioned, you know, the hangout places are fantastic. And I also have a concern about the lockers, but I disagree. I think actually closer to the classrooms, but also watching where they get on the bus because I've had experience with children, students saying to me, I can't get back to my locker and then meet the bus because it's a zigzag between almost be ready at the bus and then going all the way to your locker. So just that kind of traffic flow thing. But my question was going to be the elevator. We went to a couple of schools where the elevator was open access and other elevators where it's, you got to have the key and have one of six reasons why you're allowed to use it. And also the elevator being big enough. So in this case, the elevator would need to be big enough for any child that's in the community pathways to get to the art classroom. So I'm assuming that it is going to be MMR new size rather than the old style.
Through the chair to trustee Harvey Hope, what we have been doing in the new schools is what's called a full passenger elevator. So I would go back historically when elevators were being added into schools as retrofits. There was a device on the market called a Lula Lift. So it was a limited use, limited access, and that was, thus the name Lula. And it was for accessibility. That was really what it was. So it was typically restricted because of its, I'll say, more light duty applications and a need to protect it. What we've been putting in most recently is a full passenger elevator like you'd find in any commercial building that's open for use most of the time. And I'm not aware, I think most of the schools that have those, leave them open for that use. I don't, I'm not aware of them restricting the access. But that can come down to a school policy depending on who or why or how it gets used.
Follow up. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm really glad to hear it's open access. I mean, anyway, but wondering whether that's actually even still big enough because some of the, as you put it, the equipment that's being used, it needs that garage that we talked about, is actually getting larger. And so just to make sure that it would be sufficient size, better to do it right up front. Also, it being the Milton newest community pathways location, as well as some of those pieces of art may be big. So there's a couple of reasons there.
Thank you. And seeing no further questions, I'd like to thank you very much.
Actually, madam chair, if I may, there's one page in the report I haven't talked about that I'd like to take one moment to just.
No. Go ahead anyways.
There is a, I believe it's actually at the beginning of the report, so to my technical assistant. Oh, is it?
I didn't send them the chart.
No, no. I think, I thought I saw it earlier. Did I not? Or is it just on mine? It's the sheet that shows a series of the numbers of the room loading, not in the package?
It is in the package. I didn't send it to Ron.
Oh, okay. Okay. No, that's fine. I'll just explain to trustees what it is then. So the document that is in the report that looks like a spreadsheet with a series of numbers and columns, if you look to the left half of the page, that is a ministry template or guideline to school boards on how or what you should put into a new build. So it's a very generic, general suggestion. Unlike ourselves, some boards have not built a school in many years and it kind of formulates their approach and their plan so that they don't overbuild the school or build a great big building that doesn't have enough kids in it. So that's part of what that is designed to do. It's broken down into a number of instructional spaces as well as support spaces. The columns on the right are us inserting our details of this particular building into it so that you can see the number of classrooms, the number of science labs, the number of gyms, how they're loaded, and basically you come up with the actual student loading at that point. If you look at it closely, you'll see that we are very close to the ministry guideline number. We would typically want to be under that number because we get our dollars based on the generic version of it. And if we happen to be coming in at a higher cost per square foot than the ministry benchmark, then the way in which we compensate for that is we build the building a little bit smaller. And the math works out that we then have enough money to do so. So we're pretty much right at the level of the guide documents as they exist right now. So I just wanted to point out what that particular document was for and how it gets used.
Thank you very much. And thank you once again for your report. It was very detailed and I think trustees were able to have a good understanding of what the proposal is. Thank you. So we're now up to... Lights. We're now up to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports tonight? Trustee Gervence.
Okay. I've attended two committees recently with trustee Papin. The two of us attended the Innovation and ICT Committee and we were involved in focus groups within the committee to give the, give feedback on the digital citizenship website initiative. And also I was involved in the calendar committee for trying to set up next year's calendar. And we're still in discussions with the Holton Catholic District School Board on trying to synchronize our days.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Through you, chair. The Special Education Steering Committee met yesterday and the work of Phase One or the analytical portion of the review is completed. A great amount of data was collected internally and from the Ministry of Education and analyzed in what I would say is a relatively short amount of time. So great work done by the consultants and the steering committee in moving this review along. We looked at enrollment data by exceptionality and compared that data to our peer boards as well as the province. We looked at student achievement data by exceptionality and looked at both the academic and non-academic achievements. We had looked at parent guardian and student survey results with respect to parent and student voice and their satisfaction on a variety of topics. And staff focus groups were conducted to get their insights and input into the review. Also preliminary financial analysis was conducted. So my understanding is that superintendent Zonofeld will be bringing some of this information to the committee of the whole in the very near future for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. So just an advisement that the CAC meeting had been changed. The new date is March 6th and it will be taking place at Garth Webb Secondary School in Oakville at 7:00 PM. The other committee mentioned is our Subcommittee for Communications on Inspire will be meeting on Monday, March 6th, thank you, at 1:30 until 3:00. Thanks.
Trustee Gray.
Thank you through the chair. Just the audit committee met yesterday, both in private and public session. And in public session, I think the highlight really for everyone was welcoming the newest member to the audit committee, Dan McCarrill. And the meeting went along with lots of good discussion and more work needed on, of course, the audit committee terms of reference. And I think we've got some good things underway right now and hopefully we can wrap a few more things up through our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Were you going to talk about the HLF, HCM?
That's mine.
Go ahead.
Okay. Talk about the HLF. We recently had the annual general meeting and it was fairly well attended. It was at Georgetown District High School and trustee Amos was there as well as myself. We looked at the work of the HLF through this past year and some of the plans moving forward. And I think we're very, very excited about some of the ideas coming forward, one of which, of course, everyone has been invited to, and that is a fundraiser coming up with the annual golf tournament being held at Granite Ridge this year. And I know that everyone has recently received one, if not two emails, to remind them about this special event. So that wraps it up for the HLF at this time.
Thank you. Next speaker is trustee Colard.
Thank you. The Subcommittee for the Consent Agenda met this week and we managed to deconstruct and rebuild what we thought should be on our agenda. We're going to be meeting hopefully next week to polish that up and make sure that it's still, that the context with regard to the bylaw that surrounds it still makes sense and we need to make any changes to the bylaw, we will discuss that at the next meeting. My only question was with regard to the Special Education Review. Since CAC is meeting on Monday, I just wanted to make sure that the information that the committee has reviewed will be also at CAC on Monday. And I know that superintendent Zonofeld isn't here this evening.
Through you, madam chair. I can certainly respond to that. The intent would be, and superintendent Zonofeld and I chatted quite a bit about this, you know, the timing and who gets to see it first. And we're trying to sort of get it out there broadly. Admin council will be looking at it probably Monday and then the information will be going out to CAC and to trustees for the committee meeting as well. So it's out there. And right now, it's really data and being shared, there's no specific recommendations, that sort of thing.
Thank you. Trustee Papin.
Thank you. I attended Student Senate on February the 7th and the next Student Senate meeting will be on March 28th and they're preparing for their next elections. I had the pleasure of attending the Student Trustee Conference in Ottawa. The students were very organized, participated fully and behaved respectively in all their activities. It was very interesting to sit in on some of their discussions. And on Monday, March the 6th, the French Advisory Committee will have their first meeting in about a year. And I think that's here, right? Yes, yeah. 7 o'clock? Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Wast your griefs.
Thank you. Tentative schedule for our committee, our next committee of the whole meeting would include the Special Education Review, a brief presentation on my blueprint that I know that trustees had asked about and are interested in, and also a very brief budget new initiatives list. So again, just with regard to scheduling of staff and so on, that's the tentative schedule.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers on this topic, we'll move along to the director's report.
Thanks, madam chair. I just have one update tonight. And though I think I saw all trustees at the, or most trustees for sure, at the public PAR meeting last night, we thought we should do a quick update for any of the public still viewing. I want to defer to superintendent Padra Barrett to just talk about briefly last night's meeting, but also the survey that's out there as well.
Thank you, Associate Director Bog, and through the chair to trustees. The data I'm going to give you is of this morning, so it's probably actually well past this. The survey site's been visited over 2,000 times. We have 550 completed surveys. Average completion time's about 20 minutes. Not about, it is 20 minutes. And we're finding it's coming down a little bit. So technically, it's going well. Any issues we're finding tend to be people completing the survey on a tablet or cellphone. And it does say not, please don't do that because, but so it seems to be going well. People are getting into the site and completing the surveys at a good pace and we do expect that will continue. Yet last night's meeting is designed for the public to interact with the options themselves, get to better know the options to prepare them to do the survey. We had 30 senior staff there, give or take, to interact and answer people's questions. And I think, I think that went well, all in all. And we do look to repeat the process. We don't want a lot of changes in the process. On a different note, I do, I do want to highlight for trustees, as of today, the park has asked for one additional meeting. So we're going to meet, one additional working meeting. It will be before the last meeting. So we're going to do two meetings in one week and that will be March 21st, Tuesday, will be the new date. And that would be 7 o'clock here in the same place. And then while our final meeting will be the already announced Thursday, March 23rd. So they have asked to just go deeper. We expect it will be the same six options, but just continuing to discuss and explore those six options and any minor tweaks or adjustments to those. So I did want to get you that date. I will email you that and confirm that too to all of you as well. And Marnie Denton will work with us too to get that out to the community.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Padra Barrett. Do you have anything else, Associate Director Bog? No? Okay. I think there's some questions though. Trustee Gray.
Thank you through the chair. No, I would like to just add, on behalf of my fellow colleague trustees, a great big thank you to all of the principals who hosted the trustees last week on tours that have now, I think the tours have spanned over a couple of months' time now, but last week certainly many of us had the chance to visit several of the sites, all last Thursday. And we were given very fulsome tours by the principals and I'd like to extend my thanks to those principals who spent so much time with us and gave us some wonderful information of all of the schools that we visited in Burlington. Coming from the hills, I found it very, very useful because I'm not at all acquainted nor have had the opportunity to have been in many of the schools in Burlington. I found it exceedingly helpful. So thank you to the staff at those schools for those tours last week.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. Through the chair. Actually, my comment is regarding the director's report on the PAR public meeting last night. First of all, I just wanted to say how grateful I was to see so many staff out and I certainly heard a lot of comments and appreciation from people noticing that there was a lot going on. And I also wanted to sort of give a shout out to the communications department for coming up with this awesome piece. And I'm hoping this is online because I heard from a lot of people who were trying to access the survey, they felt this was a very helpful piece to have beside you when you completed the survey. So that was, that was just a piece of feedback. I do have some other commentary. I heard from a few people who were hoping to see a preamble at the meeting. They weren't really, I think, prepared for what that evening looked like and were sort of, you know, through a process of assimilation, learned quickly, but came in and just saw a bunch of people and didn't know sort of how to navigate the room because there was such a high turnout. So just something to think about. And another piece was that people would be very grateful for a, I want to say, a key on the wall. on the wall beside the maps. There was some concern that they didn't understand some of the language used, the OTG. You know, the pieces that were, we understand because we're so familiar with the information, but the general public who's perhaps coming into this, so just, that was, you know, I would say having a roadmap of how to read the material or who to go to talk to. Even myself, I was really grateful for when staff said, well, I think you should go talk to facilities, this is not really an area that, you know, I can speak to. And the other, and the final piece, which I think is really important, there was an accessibility comment that was raised, and somebody was having an issue with actually reading the material. And I know that we are very compliant in AODA with our materials, but certainly there were people who found it very difficult to actually read the pieces on the wall. And so that was just some feedback that I thought that was very valuable, and certainly I appreciated, because the public would like to be very engaged in this process. And this was, this opportunity to do this kind of, I want to say networking, but problems, collaborative problem solving, as we do in our schools, was a great way to get a lot of conversations going. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thanks, trustee Reynolds, for those suggestions, and we'll certainly take those back. While we're trying to maintain a consistent format for the next meeting, some little tweakings like the key on the wall actually is a great idea, and we'll have a look at. We've talked about staff greeting visitors as they come in to talk to them about the night, and we had several staff doing that so that they would understand the format, but I think there were times when there were so many people coming in, we may not have got to folks, so we're looking at that as well.
Thank you very much. Trustee Pappen.
Thank you. I'd also like to echo trustee Gray's comments about the school tours. I know when the idea first came up, I really wasn't interested, having grown up in Burlington and figured I've been to all the high schools, why do I really need to see them? But I think what it gave us was a face to the communities and the cultures that existed all of the schools. I really appreciated Principal Pfeiffer's YouTube, which I watched after I got home. It was very exhausting, it was a lot for one day, but it was well worth it. And for me, the proudest moment was seeing my son's graduation picture twice at Aldershot, so that was pretty cool. I'd also like to talk about the meeting yesterday. I thought it was very well organized, I thought it was very beneficial for a lot of one-on-one conversations with our community. And I thought it was really good to be able to take parents, if you weren't able to answer a question, you could take them. I was looking for Superintendent Padra Berrick a lot of times, and also trustee Danielli. So that was very effective in getting questions answered very quickly. So I'd like to commend you on the meeting yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Colard.
Thank you. I too really thought last night's meeting was a great opportunity to have those group and one-on-one conversations with people who perhaps had not been as involved in the process as they might have been. And I appreciated seeing so many people show up for the meeting. But like trustee Reynolds, I was a bit concerned that there didn't seem to have been that preamble piece, where people felt that they had been given instructions on what to do in that space. And people kept waiting for somebody to say something, at least that's what they said to me. So, yeah, I thought that the format was great, but it would have been wonderful for somebody to have announced periodically what the format was, because people were expecting more of a question and answer than a kiosk type of carousel open house.
And seeing no further speakers on the topic, we'll now move to communications from the chair. I don't have a lot. I was glad to be able to interact with a number of people from the community yesterday at the, in the PAR. And I, one of the things I shared with them was, it wasn't, this is not an easy process for trustees either. I mean, we understand what the community's going through, but it is not an easy decision to have to shut down any school. And I've done it three or four times, and you agonize over it every single time. And they, after talking to them, they went, oh yeah, well, I guess it isn't that easy a decision. So we not purposely were setting out, and I tried to explain to them to shut down any school, and I said, and I tried to convince them that there was no presupposition on which schools were closing down. As far as we were concerned, we're still waiting for the committee to do their work. So I believe some people heard what I said, so. I just wanted to share that next week, there's a presentation on Finding Winnie at Central. It's the book that was read this year throughout the system, and the author is coming to speak about it. So if you're interested, it's on Thursday night. And there's going to be a Fix the Finances meeting, I'm sorry, it's at 4 o'clock on Wednesday. I'll send it, but again, I'm working around schedules. So that is about it at this moment, and the week after that is March break. So we're now up to trustee questions and comments. Trustee Pappen.
Thank you. As we come to the end of Black History Month, I would like to remember Bernie Custis, an American-born person of color who called Burlington his home for many years. Thursday, February 23rd, 2017 marked the passing of Bernie Custis in his 88th year and the commencement of great grief for many people around the world in education and athletics. Bernie served, sorry, Bernie is survived by his family in Canada and the United States, who will miss him dearly. As a testament to Bernie's character, he had many families adopt him, and for so many, he was a much-loved uncle who will be sadly missed. Bernie was born in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania on September 23rd, 2000, sorry, 1929. His athletic prowess shone at an early age, and he lettered in baseball, football, basketball, and track and field while attending high school. Bernie earned an athletic scholarship to Syracuse University, where he starred in football as an African-American football quarterback, which was unheard of at the time. Bernie's exposure to avert racism occurred when he attended a training camp after being drafted by the Cleveland Browns, and was told that the NFL was not ready for a colored quarterback. They weren't black yet. Bernie was given an opportunity to play for the Hamilton Tiger Cats in 1951, where he became the first African-American quarterback in North America. He was able to demonstrate his skills as quarterback and running back, and he was instrumental in winning the Grey Cup in 1953. His football career ended abruptly due to an injury, but also heralded his coaching career with the Oakville Black Knights, Burlington Braves, Sheridan Bruins, and McMaster Marauders. Bernie became a teacher and a principal for the Wentworth County School Board, in which he dedicated himself to having all youth maximize their potential. The coach may be gone, but his legacy will endure forever. Rest in peace, Mr. Custis.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you for sharing that. So this evening, I had the pleasure of introducing the lineup at the Sears Ontario Drama Festival at Burlington Central High School. But I just wanted to remind trustees around the table that this festival is a week-long, and each night, there are high schools that are performing. I've had the pleasure of seeing TA Blacklock and Aldershot on Monday night, and I would hope that you could join me either tomorrow night or Friday. The shows, you get to see three shows from some amazing schools, and yeah, so I hope that you can join them. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further speakers, could I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Gray, seconded by trustee Pappen. And all those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Well, thank you very much, everyone, and have a good night.